Stand for prayer led by Councilman Carol Hall, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, inspire us today with the qualities of a good council. Give us insight to make wise decisions, integrity to face the truth, courage to make difficult choices, and compassion for the needs of others. Make us a model of justice and honor for the town of Enfield, and let us never forget that our job is to serve both you and others. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have roll call, please?
Councilman Hall?
Here.
Mayor Copen?
Here.
Councilman Kinsler?
Here.
Councilman Lee?
Councilman Mangini?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Councilman Stokes?
Here.
Councilman Arnoni?
Here.
Councilman Bosco?
Here.
Councilman Crowley?
Here.
Councilman Edgar?
Here.
Those 10 members present, one is absent.
For the fire evacuation announcement, I remind the folks in the audience, in the event of the fire alarm sounding here at Town Hall, everyone must evacuate the building. The closest exit would be to the rear of council chambers and out to the front of Town Hall, but if you choose to go out the side door to your right or left, we ask that you then take the back set of stairs to the backside of Town Hall and out to the parking lot. Minutes of the preceding meetings, first would be the special meeting of September 17th.
So moved.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Any discussion on the minutes? Sensing none, by show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed, any abstentions? One abstention. And we have the minutes of the regular meeting of September 17th.
So moved.
By Councilman Mangini, seconded by Deputy Mayor Nelson. Discussion. Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed, any abstentions? One abstention. Next item on the agenda is our special guests section of the agenda, and we have representatives from the registrar of voters, and we have the Republican registrar voter, Dave Waller, coming forward, and the Democrat registrar voters, Carol Sensky, coming forward.
Oh, is that for timing?
That is perfect timing.
Perfect timing. I'll stand.
We need, no, you can unlatch one of the chairs.
On your shoulder. Watch.
Just watch the shoulder.
You're on company time this time, and we don't want the workman's comp claim.
I wish I was.
Welcome.
No tripping.
Thank you. We're here tonight, I guess, just to begin to alert people about the November...
Is that on?
It's on, yeah.
We're here tonight, Carol and I, here tonight just to alert the council and the public to the upcoming election on Tuesday, November 6th.
When we last met, when I was here last and met with you in February, we assumed you were going to have a committee. That was, that was in the minutes, that you were going to form a committee to talk about the polling sites, and there was some discussion about the different state statutes, and I think we're all on the same page to have four polling sites. Am I correct? Yes, there's no, no argument with that, right? Okay. I was hearing some things that our Democratic town chair got a call from the State Central Committee saying that they heard that we were only going to have two, so I wanted to make sure it wasn't coming from any of us. We're all on the same page. David and I have advertised for poll workers. We've, we've set up all the, we've gotten, we've interviewed poll workers, and we have training scheduled, and we're ready to go for our four original sites.
And Carol, Carol and I worked the first week of September to do the behind-the-scenes internal redistricting that had to get done so that we can open up the four sites.
Yeah.
So that, that's, that's done.
All the, all those streets have been changed into the correct districts now.
And just want to maybe mention, there's, people are calling, looking for voting in advance. I want to give a little plug to the town clerk's office, since they're here tonight. Absentee balloting, absentee voting is handled through the town clerk's office, and people can get absentee applications online on the town website, on the town clerk's webpage, or at the town clerk's office. And people have to fill out the application before they can get the ballot, and the ballots are usually available, would be available beginning the first Friday in October. So that is up and running.
Suzanne?
I would just like to add that there are certain restrictions. This isn't open balloting through the absentee system. You, you need to have a specific reason to use an absentee ballot, such as being out of town or something like that. Some states, it's open to everyone, but not Connecticut, so I just wanted to add that.
And so absentee, absentee voting questions are coming up now. I want the council to be aware of it, and how, and how to easily, people can easily get an absentee application and then the ballot. There will be a couple of referendum questions on the ballot. One is to officially redistrict the four council districts for the calendar year 2013. And the second ballot question will be a Enfield High School consolidation question, referendum, asking people to support the consolidation of the high schools into one facility. So those are two key, two key things that will be on this year's ballot that you don't normally see on, on another ballot. And I think the question was asked, when, when will we, when can people see names of candidates for, for office? They're on the Secretary of State's webpage. I was remanded or corrected by Director Peggy Reeves, Carol's good friend, to, to direct people to their website if someone wants to see who is on the ballot, the names of the candidates. They're there. We don't have ballots here yet. They're on their way. But if, if the public wants to see names of candidates, they can go to SOTS.
The state of Connecticut, right, the state of Connecticut, sots...
Dot gov, I believe.
Dot gov.
So.
There's just one other thing I want to throw out there, just to give you a heads up. I'm getting a lot of phone calls and conversations about, from the seniors that vote at Enfield High School, and they've asked me if I would work towards getting them back to Enfield Street School. And my thought is that if we, if, if this consolidation goes through, we're going to be, not be able to use Enfield High School in the near future anyway, so I have told them that I will work towards getting us back to Enfield Street School, just because it's more convenient.
All right, questions from the council? Councilman Hall?
Dave, I don't know if Suzanne wants to answer this. The absentee ballots, the applications, how exactly do we do that online? So you have to, can you just walk us through, you, you fill out a form, you download the form, you fill it out? Can you send it over the internet back to the... No.
No, you have to mail it or hand-deliver it to town clerk's office.
Okay, so you fill out the application, print it out, return it, and then the absentee ballot can be mailed to you?
It will be mailed to the person who submitted the, the application.
Okay. And what, what exactly do we need for proof of ID when you apply for the application for absentee ballot?
I defer to the town clerk.
There, there's no ID that's necessary. They're, they're signing the absent, the application under penalty of false statement.
Okay.
So typically, that's it. If you're a first voter, when you send your ballot back, you do need to send ID with that, but that's more the registrar of voters piece of it, rather than the absentee ballot piece of it.
And that could be a picture, photocopy of your driver's license, an envelope that you've got your CL&amp;P bill in with your name and address on, on it, so.
And, and one thing I will add, too, if you bring the application in personally, even if you've downloaded and filled it out, we'll issue the ballot while you wait for it in our office. It doesn't, they don't all have to be mailed. If you bring it in in person, we can issue it.
Right. Okay, thank you.
And you can actually vote when you're there at your office as well, so you could pick it up, vote, and complete the whole process.
Turn it right back in again.
Or take it with you and mail it in.
Yes.
And for people that are not physically able to come and get them, someone else can pick up an absentee ballot for them.
Thank you.
All set, Carol? I have Cindy, then Tom.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming and sharing the information. We appreciate it. And I'm happy that you've confirmed the four polling places are going to be restored. Do we know which ones they are?
Yes, there are Enfield High School, Fermi High School, JFK Middle School, and...
Bernard.
Henry Bernard. I always want to say Nathan Hill. Henry Bernard.
Now, that brings me to my second question. Carol, you did mention the Enfield High School, as far as a consolidation, if it passes through referendum. My question would be if, for some reason, you know, heaven help us, it didn't pass. There are many handicapped and elderly people that have approached us, me as well, that really have much difficulty with the Enfield High School location. Will there be a Plan B to revisit, looking at Enfield Street School, perhaps?
I maybe didn't say that correctly. My plan is to try and revisit going to Enfield Street School. Whether or not it passes, I'm just thinking that that would be another reason to look into it, because the, if, if the renovation goes through, we wouldn't be able to use it anyway.
Okay.
But yes, you know, you know, what happens is, from the curb to the door is not any different at either school. However, once you get in there, you have to walk a really long way to go around the whole cafeteria and back out, and that seems to be a problem for, for some of the elderly people.
That is a problem, and also the fact that many of these people are not always being dropped off directly in front of the entrance, and they have to hoof it up above a level. And if there are wet leaves, if there are debris or, or any kind of obstruction, they're subject to injury, and that's frightening to many people.
We actually haven't addressed that by having that whole front like a handicap drop-off area. And you don't have to have a plate or a placard to do that. If you have somebody that needs to be dropped off at the door, that's fine.
Okay. And then the other question that I have, just curiously, have, have you, our town clerk, decided who's going to be printing the ballots? Do we have a company that we use, or?
Yes.
Somebody asked me that question. I'm just curious how.
Atkins Printers.
Okay. Are they a local company, or?
They're, they're in Massachusetts.
No, New Britain, Connecticut.
Oh, are they?
Yep. Atkins, there, there are two companies that print ballots, LHS in New Hampshire and Atkins in, in New Britain, Connecticut.
Okay.
And we've used them, just those two, the whole time.
Okay.
Okay, we will be sending out notifications, though, to all the vendors, all the voters, and we're going to use a vendor that is not connected to any of our...
Okay.
Parties in any way.
I will, thank you. I appreciate you answering the questions.
Thank you, Cindy. Tom?
I'd want to thank you guys for, I know you'd put a lot of hard work into this whole redistricting question, and assuming it passes, thank you for, well, thank you even if it doesn't, but, because it, it takes that every 10 years and balances out the population so that their representation is, is equal as possible, and I think that's really important. I just wanted to thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Tom?
Pat? Hey, guys, how are you?
Good.
A couple of quick things, and I just, as we're going over, more things are coming to me, actually. At Enfield High School, I know we use the cafeteria, but over in the new section that we added on, where the, the big rooms are, the bigger of the rooms, did we look in, in those rooms at all because they're closer to the curb, and, and they're bigger rooms than they are really just classrooms, or was it not feasible?
What's that, like the D wing you're talking about? The old D wing?
Well, you know, the addition that we put on Enfield High?
No, I don't know.
About eight years ago? We, we did use a small room off the curb for the April Republican Presidential Primary.
How'd that work?
It was fine when you have...
Small numbers.
Small number.
Right.
The cafeteria is actually well-positioned. It can, it, because you have a separate entrance and exit door, you can get people in and out of there pretty quick.
Yeah.
You can handle thousands.
I understand of it. It's just, it was just a thought.
The other, the other rooms that we did use is good for a few hundred people.
Okay. My, my other concern was, you talk about Enfield Street School, possibly moving it to that. The issue I have with that was Enfield Street School was full when we were up there. It was always a busy place, and it was packed, and it was only holding half the people of the district. The other half were coming here to Town Hall. Parking was, parking was very tough there. I mean, the lot filled up real quick. Is there a possibility we could also look at the Alcorn School gym? I know you guys don't want to go to another polling place, but the fact is, the Enfield Street School was, was really kind of a busy area.
Is, is there more parking at Alcorn?
Well, I was thinking, my opinion would be to open up both, so you get voters to both. I know you don't want to, but on the other hand, if, I don't think Enfield Street School can really handle it, to be honest with you. But that's just my opinion, you know, not professional, obviously. And in condensing, and I know you, I know you don't want to go back to that, but my thought would be, do we save enough money from going down from the nine polling places that we could afford to open up one more?
We did save money.
How much did we save?
Well, the budget's...
Offhand.
We'd have to look back over the past three years, you know, and it's into thousands, it's into tens of thousands. I just, you know, we haven't, we haven't been asked the question before, but yeah.
Yeah, we really, you know, it was never about the money, so we nev, we never really tracked it. It was basically about the lack of poll workers and, you know, things like that, that we, we went with the consolidation, but it can be looked at. Anything can be looked at.
Yeah, if we just could, I mean, because I just thought Enfield Street School was kind of crowded, especially...
It would probably, you don't really want to beat an elementary school unless you have the parking of a high school or a middle school. We're fortunate at, at Henry Barnard, you have two separate parking lots, plus we use the grass.
Right.
We put all the employees, or asked the school department employees to go on the grass. We have our poll workers go on the grass. That allows sufficient parking spaces for voters. Yeah, you have to be, you have to look at parking. I mean, just a off-the-cuff observation, the best room at Enfield Street School is the gym.
Right.
Not, not, not the multipurpose room, because that has a one entrance, one exit. You need a, you need a one entrance, one exit for the number of voters. So you'd have to, but, you know, those are discussions for the future.
I appreciate it. And, oh, and we're sending out notices on about the 15th?
Week of the 22nd.
Oh, the 22nd, okay.
We'd hope to come back here on the 15th and maybe show you the postcards and all that stuff, too.
Question, will, will the questions that are going to be on the ballot be on those notices? Can they be on those notices?
Do you have an order to get?
Um, boy, I, you, you, good question. I believe that there is space on one of those post, I'd have to look.
If I could, I could...
But we could look at one of the ones that was sent out previously. I mean, the idea is to entice the voter to go to the voting site, that that's the purpose of the postcard, and to notify the voter of their proper voting site, both now and for the next nine years.
Right.
So...
If we could, if we could throw that on there, I, I would appreciate it. I just think it's great that the more, the more people we know, how many times are, are, does our election numbers come back and people just didn't vote on the questions because they missed them? So, you know, we'd like to pop those out there.
And we would be glad to accept suggestions that we could filter in on that, that, you know, email. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Anyone else? Suzanne?
I just have one more thing I'd like to add about absentee balloting. We can only issue the ballot to the person or mail it directly to them. We can't issue it to just anyone on behalf of the person making their application, so I wanted to be clear about that, okay? It can be, the person using the ballot can designate someone to return it for them, but again, we can only issue it to the person who's, who's making the application, just to be certain.
Anyone else? Just because this dovetailed into a conversation about Enfield High School, and I think to be fair to, to all the voting sites, because wherever we vote, people have a long way to walk, no matter if they're voting at Fermi or Enfield, at JFK especially, and you do make accommodations for handicap parking plus just general parking close to, to the entrances. It would be good to see, based on where the most up-close parking is available, what is the distance to walk and do your process through Fermi, through Enfield, so that we're actually dealing with numbers? Because I think a lot of it, my understanding, it's, it's feelings that, that it's a long way to walk compared to what, what people were used to walking here at Town Hall. But at the other three polling places across the town, when we moved from the nine to the four and going to larger schools, the, the distance increased for, for everybody. So if we're going to be looking at, you know, if we're looking at one specific polling place, we should take a look at all four polling places to say, you know, this is, if you park at Fermi High School in an accommodated space, this is, this is what the walk is. And in November, Public Works has one of the measuring wheels, and if you take five minutes, you could actually just trace the path of a voter.
Are you?
And, and so that we actually just have hard numbers behind it versus feelings. And, and so we could actually see what it is, and we could say, hey, you know, at Enfield High School, it is a 20% more of a walk, or it's really the same as Fermi, or less than JFK. And that way, we're dealing with, with numbers versus personal feelings.
Are you asking us to do that from the handicap aspect or for everyone?
I think from, I think, well, you could do it from, for everyone, but I, I know when we're all out there during our town elections, and we're always pointing people in the direction of, of a good place to park. And you even have signage saying, parking is available, I know from Fermi, you know, parking is available around the, around the ring. And, and we try to, to move people to, to that type of parking to help accommodate their entry in. And so it just, if you've got the opportunity, actually do some measurements on, on election day, so that we've got some hard facts behind what, what, what we're going to be talking about come after this election. And...
Just, just so you know, I know that they're all outside of the 75-foot marker.
Yes.
Fermi, I think, is the furthest.
Yeah.
Well, I ought to mention one, one service that is offered and has been done by moderators at Enfield High and at other places. It's called curbside voting. And what, what it's required is if someone parks the curb with a voter in the car, they go into the voting site. Again, we have the handicap signs there right at the door, so you can park, go inside, and they see the moderator, so have someone in the car who can't get out, who's elderly or infirm, cannot walk, and would like to vote. And then the, then there's a procedure for doing that. But we, we've been doing that for years. It's not necessarily a publicized activity, but it is done. Just want to make the council aware of that.
And, and the same person that could not go in would certainly be entitled to use the absentee ballot, ballot system.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct.
And the parties are both good at organizing rides to the polls and moving, helping people move in so that they're not parking in a, in a distant parking lot, so. But if we could get some numbers, I think it will help frame the discussion to see what, what are we actually dealing with if we need to adjust polling places based on too long of a walk? And you see it, you know, by no means, you see it when you're out there, you see people struggling to, to walk that far of a distance. It just happens. It's the nature of what our society is. We've got people that, that can't be expected to walk a couple hundred yards to get to, to a polling place, so. And I thank you for the update on, on the notifications, the postcards going out, because that's critical. If we can do something along the lines to just draw attention that there are, and we may have to be broader, saying, you know, besides the, you're voting for president, senator, and congressman, and state senator, and state rep, but you're also having two referendum questions. So I don't, I don't know how fair or balanced or whatever we need to be in, on the postcard, because it's bond counsel, too, that needs to make sure that we're okay and we're not violating anything, saying, there's a question on the ballot.
Yeah.
But thanks for all the work that you've done putting on the redistricting, getting the four polling places up and running, recruiting the staff that really do a great job in Enfield. And you, both of you are commended for running fair, clean, well-organized elections, and we've seen that year after year. So thanks for the work that you do on behalf of the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll see you at the next meeting.
Yeah, bet.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is public communications and petitions. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address the council, I ask that you please raise your hand. I will call on you. Please come up to the front table. State your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to no more than five minutes, and we ask that you refrain from the use of personalities. And I saw Mr. Denny's hand up first, so Mr. Denny, you're first. Mr. Ballard, you'll be second.
Ed Denny, 19 O'Lord Drive. You stole all my thunder tonight, because I was here because of two voting places. I was here because I was a little disappointed in the town when we had two voting places. I see people all over the world fighting to vote, and it seemed to me that Enfield was restricting the vote because of the two voting places. I thought it was kind of a fiasco. But anyway, that's why I'm here. I was going to ask about going back to four voting places. I wanted to make a comment that I think, and you already took my thunder about that, to go and looking at Hasbro Memorial and other locations and Enfield Street School because of the, the walking distance. I think JFK had an opportunity to work the last election at JFK, and the walking is pretty tough there, too, if you're, if you're not handicapping or not dropping you off. I wanted to make a comment that in 2008, we had the biggest turnouts at Hasbro Memorial and Enfield Street School that we ever had before, if you looked at those numbers. And working the polls, I didn't really see a real big problem. Enfield Street was a little bit jammed, but I didn't see a real big problem with the parking situation. It's easy, they're easy-access schools. The other comment I have, and I won't take any every time, I think your Blight Committee and your people who are working are doing a great job. I've been around town, I'm here all day. I don't work driving around, and things are being done. I hope you continue this on a year-round basis, because it seems to be working. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ed. Mr. Ballard?
I'm here tonight to talk about a couple of issues, and one is the, recently, the, I'm a member of the Housing Authority, and we had our, our Connecticut Housing Authority meeting August 27th, 28th, and 29th, down at the casino. And I wanted to inform you that Senator John Kissel was named Legislative of the Year. And he was named that because, he was given that award because there was a bill in the Senate called Senate Bill 522, which was going to allow felons to get into our housing stock, and especially our senior housing stock. And we already have a problem there because we have... And we already have a problem there, because we have to bring in disabled people and let them use it. So John Kessel caught a hold of this, and he got his colleagues and the Democratic colleagues, and they killed the bill. And if it wasn't for John, John was made aware of it by our director, who heard something about it, and nobody seemed to know anything about it, but it was one of those bills that had something hidden in it. And John was really recognized by the governor at that meeting also. And we also had one of our students that lives here in our moderate housing, he got a scholarship award from Connecticut NARO that only issues four scholarships a year, and he got a scholarship for his year in college. Incidentally, I gave councilman, I mean, Mayor Copan, who is a councilman, something to read. I got new glasses, and I'm having a problem with them. And if you would paraphrase that award, Scott, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. What Mr. Ballard had given to me, and I'm just going to take a couple sections. Being an advocate means being a champion for the cause or causes you believe in. It doesn't matter who you are or where you're from. If you make your argument and support it with facts, you can educate people and make them see why your cause is worthy of attention. If you persist, you can succeed in reaching your goal, you can make a positive difference in people's lives. Be an advocate is what Kessel told attendees at the annual CONN-NARO
Yes.
Convention, which was held recently at Mohegan Sun Convention Center. CONN-NARO stands for Connecticut National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials. It's celebrating 60 years of conquering hurdles and maintaining a leadership position in the Connecticut housing industry. One of the causes that Kessel championed during his time as a state legislator has been improving public housing here in north-central Connecticut. On that front, we received great news in June, when the governor, Governor Malloy, announced that Enfield's Mark Twain Congregate Housing Complex would be among the first recipients of $1.4 million in state aid. The complex provides public housing for the frail and elderly, and the money will be spent rehabilitating public spaces, replacing a roof, and bringing new kitchens to the complex's oldest units. And the changes at Mark Twain Complex will last for decades and create local construction jobs in the process. At the convention, Kessel was honored and was named CONN-NARO's 2012 Legislative of the Year.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
The second item is about the referendum for the schools. I know we talked about it quite a bit early in the spring and in the early summer, but I want people to be aware of the fact that this is a very, very important vote. And by bringing Enfield High School and Fermi together at Enfield High School, it's very important, because we, if we don't do that, it's going to really cost us more heavily, because we'll have to bring both schools up to conformity. And I am definitely for the consolidation, and by going with this, we're going to save us, is it $68 million, by going into the one school? I think the initial charge was $103 for the whole project. And if we don't do it this way, we'll have to go for the whole $103,000, a million dollars. And if we go, if we go for the combination and vote approval of it, you'll be voting for a tax reduction for yourselves. Thank you very much. Good luck, folks, and I don't envy or possess.
Thank you, Bill. Public Communications. Mr. Moriarty.
I'm Steve Moriarty, 24 Seedor Drive, here in lovely Enfield, Connecticut. On October 6th, as part of the National Solar Tour, I'll be opening up my backyard for people to take a tour of my solar panels and solar hot water and a bunch of other things that I do. This will help them to get over any anxiety that they may have about solar panels. My solar panels are a ground-mounted system, so they can get up close to them, they can knock on them, they can go underneath them if they want. Solar is becoming more popular, as has been noted here in the past few meetings, people having questions about property tax, people wondering about if it's zoned right for it. The town is addressing these issues. And just to show how much it's progressing, six years ago, or seven years ago, there was only one solar photovoltaic installation in this town. I had the second one the year after. Now we have over 22, and there's four more on the books to be done. So it's catching on. People have questions about it, please show up at my house, 24 Seedor Drive, here in Enfield, on Saturday, this Saturday, October 6th, from 10:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. If the sun's out, I'll show you how to cook with the sun, not use any energy. I'll show you all sorts of little tricks that I have for saving electricity, saving money, saving the environment, and saving your own sanity from what's going on here. Couple other minor things that I have, or one other minor thing that I have, is something to help with the parking for the voting. I ride my bike to there. I ride right up to the door. People there are very nice. I know this doesn't help the seniors or the people with handicaps, but it may open up a few more spaces. Parked right up at the door, I was in and out. I didn't have to pass by all the politicians and have them say, "Vote for me, vote for me," or "Vote for this." You know, I just rode right by, I waved, and they smiled, and I kept on going. I was in and out of there. So thank you very much again. This Saturday, October 6th, rain or shine, 24 Seedor Drive, here in Enfield, from 10:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. I'll be happy to answer your questions. The tour takes about a half hour, 40 minutes. Thank you very much, and God bless America.
Thank you, Steve. Public Communications. Anyone else? Thank you very much. We'll move on to Councilman Communications and Petitions. Councilman Kinsler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To piggyback on Steve's comments, Steve, I'm going to do my best to make it over there and get one of your great hot dogs. So if it's not sunny, can you bring out a sun lamp or something? On the subject of energy, the Enfield Library now has, working together with the Clean Energy Committee, has allowed them to put together a kiosk, and if we could throw that up on the screen for the public. The kiosk at the library, where kids can go in, adults, they have a little energy solar farm model there. They have tons of information on how to save energy and clean energy. Please stop by and visit them. It's a great little kiosk for our younger generation. And you'll just look straight in when you walk in, and you'll see you have the power, that's where it's at. So I want to make sure everybody knows about that. I want to thank Matt and Lauren over at Porter Chester. They had their first annual Military Appreciation Day last weekend, before this weekend that just ended, and it was awesome to see the residents come out, members of past military, current military, and their families. Senator Kessel, Tom Surratt, and others were able to speak, and they were very pleased with Enfield's turnout, and the word to me was that they wanted me to tell everyone that they are looking forward to next year. So please, just kind of mark that down, it's going to be about the same weekend next year, and stay tuned for that. And lastly, I wanted to just turn my screen here, if you could show what's on my screen. I want to congratulate my oldest daughter, Caitlin, and her husband, Mark, for providing me with my first grandchild, J. Seven, who's, that's three weeks old. And it's, his expression, when I captioned it, is, "What do you mean I owe $262,000 because the government spent all that money?" So I want to, I want to thank them. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Tom. And now, from the other side of the aisle, Councilman Mangini.
Thank you, Councilman Kinsler, for bringing up the Veterans Appreciation Day. I, too, attended. I probably missed you, because I went in the morning, and I was there with Karen Jarmack and Tom Surratt and a few others. It was very good. I think it's a good idea that they continue to do that. That was very nice. I also do want to mention, I had the honor of attending the Adult Daycare at the Mark Twain Facility, and they always do a nice little ceremony for their customers, their visitors. I also attended the Athletic Hall of Fame. I know our mayor usually attends with me, but he was in Michigan, not in Michigan, Indiana, Michigan-Indiana game.
Beating Michigan.
Beating Michigan. But I'm sorry, I just had to mention.
Was that Notre Dame?
It was in Notre Dame.
Who beat Michigan.
But Scott would have been at the dinner, was my point. So it was well-attended, and it's always nice to see former classmates and others receiving the award. I do want to ask for support from my council colleagues for Wreaths Across America, which is coming up on December 15th. What I'd like to do is I'd like to bring forward a proposal, and I was told to do this under Councilman Communications, for the Wreaths Across America to be televised, they need a town sponsor. And the town sponsor could be, and should be, the Enfield Town Council. So I'm going to ask my colleagues up here to support the veterans as the truck, you know, comes through a couple days prior. But the wreaths are placed over St. Patrick Cemetery in a nice ceremony at noon time on the 15th of December. But it would be good to have it televised for the general public, but I think also, importantly enough, for the veterans that can't get out and actually participate. I think, you know, we're doing a disservice by not bringing the TV to them. So I'm going to ask for support from my colleagues, that we, Enfield Town Council, can stand behind our veterans in this small fashion. And then beyond that, I do want to ask for money for the Wreaths Across America from individual council people and for the public out there. They're looking for support, they're looking for sponsors. Whatever money is donated, a portion goes to a charity of choice, in addition to purchasing the wreaths for the deceased veterans. So I want to bring that forward. And then finally, I just want to address a question to Matt. I've spoken a couple of times now about the speed sign on Donna Street. It is not only 30 miles per hour, which I would like to have it reviewed, but you can't see it anymore because it's been defaced. So I'd like to have that addressed. There are children, most importantly, children, on that street, small children, that at any given time could be darting out, and the way that people travel down that street is unacceptable. And I think that maybe we can help the situation by cleaning up the sign and maybe reducing the speed. So that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Cindy. Councilman Crowley.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just need to comment, I've got a lot of comments from constituents over in the Thompsonville section about Church Street being done. They say, "Thank you, everybody." It was a street that was in dire despair, and the council was vocal about adding that street to the list, because originally it wasn't on the list. And Matt, you and your staff did a great job of getting this street that was really needed done, so thank you very much, and the people out there really appreciate it. Couple other things, just, first, congratulations to Mount Carmel. They put on a boxing show this past weekend. It's the first time boxing has been outdoors in over 70 years here in Enfield, which used to be kind of a boxing mecca. The event, I couldn't attend it myself, because we had a football game at night, but I understand it was a great event and very successful, and they plan on doing it again next year at some point in time. Enfield High Football. This Friday night is their homecoming. They'd like to have a big public showing from the town of Enfield. They're playing Windsor Locks, kind of a rival, a local rival, 7 o'clock at Enfield High. And I was asked by a few guys on the team, including my son, to mention it on TV. So everyone's invited, please come on down and support the town. And last but not least, I just want to show this little, this hat here. There's a little history behind this hat. Our mayor does make a trip to Notre Dame each year. This hat's three years old. I finally got it. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
It's out of style now, so I'm the only one that has one of these now.
It's priceless.
It's priceless. And I just want to say thank you, and that's all I have.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilman Stokes.
All right. On the other end of it, I watched that Michigan Notre Dame game, too, and the mayor was there, and me being from Michigan originally, he was texting me through the game, and after that, I was definitely affirmed that I will not vote for him ever again after that. Anyways, congratulations to the Notre Dame fans. I just wanted to mention and say kudos to the Miller family over at Shop Right. Last week, they had a Let's Bag Hunger campaign. They invited a number of us to come and spend a couple hours bagging groceries and to bring awareness of hunger, but also they're raising money to give to the local charities, the Food Shelf and Soup Kitchen. And I just wanted to give them congratulations and a big thank you for what they do for our community. They're constantly doing things to help our schools. I think last year, they actually had given, contributed about $20,000 towards education here in town. They also do great when it comes to feeding the needy, and they're great citizens, our community. And the last one is, is for the last three years, our family has held what's called Kim's Cause, and this is a motorcycle run named after my niece, Kim, who passed away in 2010, waiting for an organ donation. She, her liver failed, and then her kidneys failed and never came. But after that, we began this motorcycle run, which brings awareness to everybody becoming an organ donor, but it also raises funds, it gives to Life Share, to help families that are going through the same situation. So I encourage folks to become an organ donor, and I want to thank all the folks in our community that came out, rode the motorcycles and contributed, and a lot of companies here that sponsored it, so just a big thank you from our family to you, so. Okay? Scott?
Thank you, Greg. Who's next? Councilman Arnony.
I'll go. Kevin, could you run that slide, please? I just want to announce that Enfield Hua will be holding its third annual Cookies for Camouflage. And this is a great event. They're looking for people to bake cookies, buy some store-bought cookies, and bring them down on November 25th from 11:00 to 3:00 at the American Legion Post, 80 on 566 Enfield Street. Go around back, bring in your cookies. They mail them out to men and women that are deployed right now, local men and women that are deployed. I really encourage you to do this. It's a great thing to do with your family, get your family together, bake some cookies. What they really need help with this year is postage costs. It's about $1.25 a pound, so if you bake a couple pounds of cookies, bring $2.50 with you. Bring enough to pay for the postage, make a donation of just postage. You see up on the screen, www.nfieldhua.org. Write that down, get online, and let's beat 2011 that had 551 pounds. Let's see if we can get over that, up to 600 or 700 pounds sent out. Also want to thank Kevin for taking our emails in the back room, Kevin Sullivan, and getting these slides up and ready for us, does a great job. Matt, Alcorn Playground, awesome. The swing set is now operational down there. I just took a ride in my way to work the other day. They re-did the mat down there, have a rubber mat. Used to have the holes in it, and it looks like they re-did the whole mat on pretty much the whole playground. Looks like there's still kids, being kids down there. I still think it's probably a great place for a camera, but it looks great. Thank Parks and Rec for me. I know the neighborhood will definitely love to use the swings again. Cindy, definitely support Wreaths Across America. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Councilman Communications, Deputy Mayor Nelson.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move D and E to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Stokes. Discussion, sensing none. All those in favor of moving the two items to miscellaneous? Those opposed? Any abstentions? Items have been moved? Anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Any further comments? I have just a couple. First of all, I want to thank all those that were involved with bringing Rachel's Challenge to our school system. The presentations happened. The presentations happened just about two weeks ago and three public forums were held. I attended the first night at John F. Kennedy Middle School with Councilman Kinsler and I think Councilman Mangini was there as well that, the same night. And at least the feedback that I've heard from parents and from students is that it was a very positive experience, impact. And the schools are beginning to, they've got, at the two high schools and at the middle school, they have clubs that are forming, or organizations that are forming of students to continue through with Rachel's Challenge and different programming and involvement of students. And this is, you know, a year-one commitment of a multi-year program for the, for the school system. And we're going to begin to meet, as we did last year, to bring the program to town. And we're going to continue to meet over the course of the next couple of months to put information together to present to the council and seek the funding for the, for the second year of the program. So I would, if anyone heard otherwise, but I heard nothing but, but very positive results. And thank you to, again, to the administrators and the teachers and the students involved at all levels of Enfield Public Schools and the support that they received from the town of Enfield to bring the program to Enfield. Another, a nice event that's coming up, it's in a couple of weekends, it's Saturday, October 20th, but it's the annual Jack-o'-lantern Festival here on the town green from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And look for information in the newspapers and on different websites, but it's a nice, another great community event. Hundreds of jack-o'-lanterns get carved and placed on bleachers and they're lit and there's judging involved, but a whole host of activities for the kids as well. And so we hope to see you out at the Jack-o'-lantern Festival. Matt, under your report, and I'm sure you've got it on your list, but if you could give us an update on any findings about Sforza Park? And Councilman Mangini had made a request about Wreaths Across America-
I have the website.
-and the fund in the filming. Is there a consent? And I believe, Matt, in leadership, we talked about it and you felt that there's no funding request that's needed, that the ETV budget would be able to absorb the additional costs of a crew filming the ceremony. But it just has to be a town-sponsored event, so we thought in leadership that if there was a nod of heads from the council to, to support the filming of the ceremony, to then have it air on ETV, that would be holding to our policy for what's shown on ETV. So do I have consensus? I see nods of heads. Okay, Cindy, so we're good there?
I gave you the website.
And the website for, Cindy, the website for ordering is wreathsacrossamerica.org. And I know on there, just based on Gene's presentation last meeting, you have to specify the-
The charity.
-the charity and the Enfield location as well. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. And a couple of us were looking at this, I'm going to pass this, pass this around to the council. Steve, did you leave this on my desk? So someone left a couple of items on my desk. And one is the 1999 Enfield Youth Vote Voters Guide. Besides the very youthful-looking photos of those of us that were on the council at that time, there, something I find very interesting is back in 1999, we had five referendum questions. One was on the expansion of the eight elementary schools and JFK Middle School at a price tag of just about 36 million. And I, and that passed. Question two was, should the town of Enfield appropriate 36 million for the construction of an additional middle school, including land acquisition? And then I guess with the reimbursements, it would cost the town 14.4 million. That question failed. Question number three was, shall the town of Enfield appropriate 5.2 million for the renovations of the A.D. Higgins Building and authorize the issuance of bonds? And you're going to give us an update on Higgins. And of course, that, that failed. Question number four, shall the town of Enfield appropriate 2.8 million for the construction of an auxiliary building on the A.D. Higgins property for the Board of Education Central Services? Board of Education Central Services. So it's like it'd become their admin building. And that question failed. And question number five is, shall the town of Enfield appropriate 4.3 million for the construction of a senior center? And that question passed. So back in 1999, we had five questions. Two passed, three failed. Some of the questions that failed, the issues are still in front of the council.
Still there.
So I'm going to pass it this way and then we'll pass it down that way. And I looked very young in 1999.
And I haven't aged at all.
I had a lot of hair in 1999. And my last comment is, the Network Against Domestic Abuse is hosting or is putting on their Purple Event. Please join us for an evening of wine, beer, martini tastings, hors d'oeuvres, carving and pasta stations, desserts and raffles, light jazz and Latin music, silent and called auctions with celebrity auctioneer Carol Walters. And this will be held on Friday, October 6, 2012, at the Holiday Inn, 1 Bright Meadow Boulevard here in Enfield. And guests are encouraged to wear purple in support of domestic violence awareness. And again, Friday, October 26th, but what it doesn't say on here is the cost of the ticket.
I think it's $50.
$50, $50 per person. And so if you're interested in going, you can contact the network at their central offices on Hazard Avenue. Anyone else?
Could I add?
Go ahead, Tom.
This is, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Turn your microphone on.
Thank you.
That's better. I get it? Yeah. So October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month also, and they're having a car show too in Summers. You can look out for that, that's their annual event. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Then we will go to the manager's report and communicate. Oh, go ahead, Ken.
I want to say on the, the challenge, the first thing you were talking about?
Rachel's Challenge.
Rachel's Challenge. I did hear feedback from that right after they had the assembly and it was from my daughter. And she was crying and she basically said, why couldn't we have done this two years ago? Two of her very good friends might still be with us and they thanked us. So it's something that I will stand behind 100%. And I don't want to say better late than never, but hopefully we can make a difference and it doesn't happen again.
Right.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Matt?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Briefly, I have a few things for you. Briefly. Enfield High School consolidation referendum. People may be aware, maybe not, that there is a issue on the ballot to combine the Fermi High School and Enfield High School. In anticipation of a lot of questions that we should be getting, we're going to be holding two open houses later this month. The first one is Tuesday, October 16th, 7:00 PM at Henry Barnard. The second will be, let's see, October 29th, which is a Monday at 7:00 PM. And the format for these open houses will be a brief presentation overview of what is going to be done for the consolidation in terms of the work necessary to renovate and add on to Enfield High School. But we'll break out and we'll have different stations where we'll have representatives from the schools, from the town, from the architect's office to answer the specific questions. So rather than having one big meeting where people are able to ask questions, we're going to have one big meeting with a lot of different points of contact, so people feel very comfortable hopefully in asking their questions and getting a face-to-face answer, rather than kind of, you know, when you have those bigger meetings, you don't necessarily have that feedback to a question you have. So we're very hopeful that this will answer a lot of questions. Obviously, we need to do this in a way that's not going to be contrary to the election law. You know, this will not be for or against type of information, it's just the facts of what is being planned and what $103 million will give us if this is approved by the voters November 6.
Can you restate the dates, times and locations?
Yes. And we'll start getting everything up on ETV as well as the, the website. And at least one of these will be filmed and placed on ETV as well, so people can, that, you know, can't make it those nights. One of the things we did find out in trying to get these scheduled is October is a very busy month. And so there was always, you know, every date had a conflict. So we will videotape, get it up onto ETV so people will be able to see it. But the first one will be Tuesday, October 16th at 7:00 PM. And that will be held in the multipurpose room in Henry Barnard. The second open house will be Monday, October 29th at 7:00 PM at Enfield High School in the cafeteria. And obviously, all residents, businesses are welcome to come, find out what, what is being proposed, what $103 million will actually get us. And hopefully, information to answer our questions so they can vote intelligently about the referendum question.
Any questions for Matt on the referendum open houses? Councilman Kinsler?
Matt, is it acceptable that we could have for the public a, some type of a leaflet or handout that has, you know, maybe bulleted information that they would have received that night? That they could take home?
Yeah, we will have vetted information that makes sure that, you know, it's just presenting facts and not opinions or beliefs or whatever.
Right. Basically, my thought is, you know, there'll be a lot of people that might not be able to make it because of their schedule or what have you. And then, you know, the neighbor picks one up for the other neighbor and brings it to them, that kind of thing.
Yeah, and it's actually information that we'll post on the website as well and try again to get out at the different schools. So, you know, anybody that's going to any of the events at the schools during the course of October will be able to see, you know, what that information is.
Anyone else on this? Okay?
To close the circle on Higgins, council did have a very lengthy meeting that you might remember, right? Remember? Last week, discussing the, the plan to go forward on the Higgins Building. And I think to kind of characterize, there was a lot of mixed emotions on that. I think everybody recognizes that this is a building that's, that's been there for a long time. It's been a part of the fabric of Thompsonville for many years. But unfortunately, the money's not there and the will is not there to do something with the building. And every day, it deteriorates a little bit more and creates issues, not only from a safety, public safety, but also from a viewpoint from the street. It's obviously not, not what it used to be and some action has to be taken. And so as part of that overall discussion, council made the final decision to authorize me to start the process to have the building demolished. So we'll be going forward and I've already started the groundwork. We'll be doing an environmental assessment very shortly, which is one of the first steps that will allow us then to prepare the bid documentation, to put it out, to see what that final cost is going to be through the RFP process. And I'm anticipating that we'll probably have that RFP out the latter half of November, with the return the latter half of December, and hopefully the award being done in January. And at that point, we'll have the company that gets elected go in and do the work necessary to tear it down. There was also a lot of talk about what is to follow once the Higgins Building is taken down. And to summarize, again, another lengthy discussion on that, you know, there will be some lasting monument to the building that will be worked into the overall setting, especially associated with the ball field. Again, there was a number of different ideas council talked about. We're looking into how to make those reality and we'll have something back to council sometime, probably in the next couple of months, in terms of how best to memorialize that building and what it meant to the community and do it in a very respectful way and one that also, you know, fits with the surrounding environment that will be left once it's gone. There was also a commitment from council that we need to keep the amenities that are currently there, the softball field, the skate park, possibly sometime in the future restoring a basketball court there. But, you know, they felt, or you felt, that that was a very important thing, that, you know, we're not going to just do away with everything that, that's there as part of the demolition, but try to work to strengthen that. Again, you know, this area is a very important part of the town green. The, the amenities are, those things are being used quite a bit. If you come here during any afternoon after school or during the summer, during, during regular school hours in the summer, but no school, you'll see those things being used on a continuous basis. So council felt that it was a very important thing that we look forward to keeping those and trying to strengthen those as part of the process as well. I don't know if there was anything else in terms of that plan on the demolition and the after effect that I missed that you want to talk about or?
Anyone want to add anything from our meeting Monday night, last Monday? Good, good synopsis? Okay. And it was, we asked Matt to give an update because we want the public to beware that-
Yes.
-the goal and the intention of the town is to bring the building down. So we don't want it to be a surprise that someone's driving by in January, February and sees the building coming down. So it's an announcement to the public that that's what we're moving forward on.
And there will be, you know, obviously between now and whenever that happens, there's going to be a number of council meetings. So if people feel that they want to speak about it, they can always come during the public comment. There will be opportun, well, there will be different actions council will have to take between now and when the demolition starts formally, that will, you know, budget the money that we have to budget and take those type of actions. So there's always plenty of opportunity for people to comment on that if they wish. But, you know, going forward, this is the plan that we're following and we hope to bring that to fruition sometime in the late winter.
Okay.
Sforza Park. When we last talked, I had a meeting, I just had a meeting with representatives from Northeast Utility in their land management as well as in their land trust management, or I guess it wasn't land trust at that point. And we had a lengthy discussion about what the council and the town of Enfield's feelings are about this Sforza Park. I let them know very clearly that, that, you know, we were looking for some type of celebration to occur on Memorial Day, 2013, to celebrate the opening, the reopening of that park. Since then, and then they told me they'd get back to me in the fall, which we're now, I think in the fall. And I have made a couple of phone calls to try to get response back from them. I know one of the steps that they said had to happen is happening and I think council was notified of the, the, the press function that they're going to have about the land trust. And that was a piece of what had to happen. They had to get all their land into a land trust. So that is going forward. I will keep continually following up on a daily basis with my contact until I get feedback on, you know, where we stand in terms of the lease agreement that we'll have to have with them and the impact that that will have on the state lease that the state has for the same land. So there's still some hurdles to clear, but they're fully knowledgeable about the timeframe that we're looking at to actually reopen the Sforza Park.
Great. Thank you.
We're waiting, but we'll keep calling. Oh, I know at the last meeting, Councilman Bosco brought this up, and I know that some council members have also been hit up about a couple different school playgrounds that equipment has been set aside because of safety issues. And, and, you know, unfortunately, we haven't invested in those playgrounds over the last several years. And so they're being used and wearing out. I know in a couple of them, we're putting a plan together to make the purchase. There is a bid that has to be done to do that. And I know DPW is working on that. You might remember that council set aside $20,000- You might remember that council set aside $20,000 in this year's budget to help replace some of those, and I think there was another 15 or 20 that was already set aside from previous budgets. So we have a considerable amount of money, but unfortunately, you know, that does not buy a lot of playscape for us. So DPW is, is part of this, putting together a replacement plan for those areas to try to do it in the most cost-respective manner, but to get the older equipment taken out. I know some of you had contacted me, I think about Hazard Memorial. That one is a little less of an issue. Even though it's taken out of service, they have ordered the parts necessary to put it back into service. I want to say, my mind's kind of out there. It's going to be delivered sometime this week or next week. Once Buildings and Ground gets the materials, they'll go right over there and put it back into service. But some of the others that have been taken out had bigger issues. That's why we had to remove those. But again, they're working on that. I know DPW is taking this very seriously, and, you know, we all regret the fact that, you know, we're taking away some of those playscapes, but, you know, without the funding in every year to do a replacement program with these, unfortunately, these are the end results. But, you know, we started putting that money aside this year, and we'll start that process on a more regular basis to be proactive rather than reactive in losing these amenities for our kids at the schools.
Councilman Lee?
Scott, is there a, is there already a traffic study or some kind of planning or design process for Hazard Memorial with respect to the traffic flow and parking scheme that's being used there?
Well, you know, traditionally, that is something that's been left up to the schools to do.
Okay.
But, you know, I think if there's a critical issue in the vacuum, we would do that.
What, the call that I got, in addition to the playground, also asked about the, or mentioned the condition of their hardtop playground. Would that be something DPW would assess and possibly overlay?
Yes.
All right. I'll follow up with you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Councilman Kinsler?
Through Scott, the town manager, on the same note, I was up at Fermi for, when we went up for bringing my daughter to school late the other day, and their blocktop around the ring and coming in the entrance there, I know that that's been talked about before, but there is a need for some, at least for the winter, some decent pothole repair, you know, for sprained ankles and that type of thing, right where they would step off to go towards the bus.
I know exactly where you're talking about.
You know where I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, again, you know, one of the things that DPW has been assessing is our parking lots and pavement issues with all of our schools. And again, that's something that, you know, we have to put a plan together, and we have to be disciplined to start spending the money and saving the money to do those things.
I understand. I just, that one is the first one that I've been to that stood out as right when you walk out and you hit the ring in the front where...
That whole, the whole drive...
A safety issue right there.
From Maple, yeah.
Yeah. It's not so much that if the driveway has a few potholes or has some, you know, gravel, but where all the people are walking right there in the front is, that's why I wanted to bring your attention.
I will talk with DPW tomorrow.
Councilman Hall?
Matt, just going into the budget season with these playgrounds, Ken, and I think you're working on it now, but come budget, can you give us an idea of what we're looking at to get these playgrounds and the playscapes in some sort of good shape?
Yep.
And the other, the other request I have, and maybe I totally missed the email or notification, when they take these playscapes out of commission for the schools and the parks, can we be notified? Because I know, I can speak for myself, and it sounds like a lot of other people get phone calls, and not knowing about them is kind of more of an embarrassment because you don't know what's going on and, you know, so...
I understand.
Yeah. So maybe we could get a heads up before they take things away, and we can give some answers to folks when they call. And in the playground study, if we can take a look at something where the rotary playscape was put up for future down the road, looking at water fountain out there or bathroom facilities of some sort, that would be great.
They're working on that.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else on this? Okay? Anything else?
And that's all I have for this evening.
All right. Anyone have any questions for Matt other than what we've already asked them? Okay, then we will go to the town attorney's report and communication.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing formal tonight. It's been relatively quiet so far, the last two weeks on the legal front, so I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Any questions for Kevin?
I'm sure it won't last, but...
No, it won't last. Kevin, no questions. So now we go right into the agenda. Reports of special committees of the council. Any? Councilman Hall?
Just a quick note, and Dan can probably give a little bit more of a comprehensive explanation. We had a refarming meeting this past week, and the radios were experiencing some issues with that Dan and the town manager have very diligently been working on to resolve. And I think we've got some resolutions this week, and maybe Dan can just give a quick synopsis of what's been going on. But it's been quite a roller coaster with the radios, but it sounds like we're wrapping our hands around the problems, and I'll let you give the update, Dan.
Sure, Councilman. Since last Thursday's meeting, the vendor Motorola with Northeastern Communications has been in Enfield on Thursday and Friday. They were checking the radio units and the police cruisers, checking the antennas. They, can you hear me okay?
No.
This is on here. I don't, don't know. Is this any better?
Yes.
Okay. Since our meeting on Thursday morning, actually started that afternoon and Friday, Motorola and Northeastern Communications have been in Enfield. They've been at the police department, checking the antennas on the police cruisers and the radios and the cabling. They've been changing out some of the antennas and the cabling, and they're going to be doing more of that until the entire fleet has been checked and inspected to make sure that they have the proper antennas in there. They've also have replaced the two directional antennas at the police department tower. They did that on Saturday, and then they were field testing it today, and we're going to do an assessment of that field test based on participants and then talking with Motorola. They have to do some follow-up there. They've also increased the strength on the PL line, private line for transmission so that they would hopefully improve the ability for the officers and dispatch to be communicating clearly with each other. So this is an ongoing process. There's a lot more to be going on. As I said, since Thursday's meeting, Motorola and Northeastern Communications, which is their authorized vendor here in Connecticut, have been pretty much full focusing on it. And I will hopefully have a more comprehensive report for the council by their 15th, by your 15th meeting.
Right. And Dan, the follow-up this week is Thursday?
There has been weekly meetings since the system went operational, well, actually since early August.
Right.
And we will be meeting again this Thursday with the same individuals that were at the last one.
Okay.
And we will be continuing to do that until we have the system accepted to the level of the agencies using it.
Great. Thanks, Dan. Thank you.
Any other reports of special committees of the council? Okay. Old business? I believe everything remains on the table. New business? There is no new business. Items for discussion? The two items under items for discussion have been moved to miscellaneous, so we'll move to miscellaneous. And the first item under miscellaneous is discussion resolution, request for transfer funds for Department of Public Works truck replacement, $197,550. So I'm going, now, since we had, from our special meeting, do I read the original one and we call for an amendment to this dollar amount? Or can I read the one for the 211-167?
Just read the one that you want to adopt.
The one that we want, because it hasn't been read in yet.
Correct.
Okay. So it's transfer funds, $211,167. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter. The following transfer is hereby made. From general fund, $211,167, to transfers to CIP, $211,167. From general fund transfer in, $211,167, to CIP, DPW Truck Replacement, $211,167. Certified the funds are available. Lynn Neney, Director of Finance.
So moved.
Seconded by Councilman Mangini. Seconded by Councilman Hall. Where's Deputy Mayor Nelson who was helping push this? Well, any questions? Councilman Bosco?
Excuse me, yeah, this is a long time. The trucks were getting in pretty tough shape, and it's always an importance of our employees and public safety out there to make sure that they're driving safe and decent vehicles.
Okay. Councilman Kinsler?
Yeah, I just want to second Councilman Bosco's comment, the need to keep the trucks safe, and we have done a great job at DPW at maintaining these vehicles and making them last a long time, but it comes a point where this is much needed and, you know, keep it safe. And we'll also be able, with this new acquisition, to do a little bit more than we currently do right now in terms of the services we provide and a little more flexibility. So that's kind of rolled into that same thing. So I'll be supporting that.
Thank you, Tom. Councilman Mangini?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo Councilman Bosco. This money is well-spent, and it's something that we need to move forward with. So I do want to thank my colleagues, Pat, Joey, and Ken, being so diligent on that subcommittee. It's very important that we work with our public works department to try and make improvements. So thank you very much for that hard work. I certainly will be supporting this.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else? Councilman Stokes?
Yeah, I just want to say the same thing. After seeing the pictures of the trucks that we have and the rust and stuff, that I want to compliment the committee for looking at this and for the public works and the director there for, you know, putting this together and also getting us prepared to look at the vehicles over the next year or so too, because we want safe vehicles on the road for our workers. But also, we want to make sure too that we have vehicles that can do the job. And one of the things I liked about it was the fact that the snowplows can go on these trucks, because every so often we hear during the wintertime how that, there's some streets don't get, we're shorthanded, and this will help us out. Not so much last year when we had only one major snow and then a quiet winter, but two years ago, we definitely could have used them, so, okay. Thank you.
Any further comment? I'd just like to take a moment to thank Councilman Crowley, Deputy Mayor Nelson, Councilman Bosco for your work on the DPW Subcommittee in bringing this forward and actually working to retool the resolution so that we get the right vehicles and we help improve our fleet. That's in sorry condition, some of the vehicles. We have a list of 15. But looking at that list, if you take the positive, this is five that would be replaced with this transfer. But there's another three that were part of the budget that the council adopted. So we're on our way to taking the worst of the vehicles, who are at least a little higher than 50%. And we know we have to continue down that road in the next budget and in future budgets. Councilman Crowley?
Yeah, just real quickly, what I want to say is that these five trucks need to be replaced, and we're getting it done. All the council members are in unison in this, and obviously, public safety comes first, and we wouldn't want anything to happen to any citizen due to our negligence. But everyone was very supportive of this, and as a committee, I think we all want to thank you for that. But the public works department will not put a truck on the road that is not safe. I just want you to understand that our employees are in safe vehicles. It's just time to start replacing them because they are being worn out and rusting away, and it's just time. We've held the line for quite a while on this issue, and with everyone's support, we're getting this done the way it should be done, and just want to say thank you.
Any further comment? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
Councilman Crowley?
Four.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
That's four, that's 11 for Chevys, none for Dodges. All right. Next item, discussion resolution. Resolution to extend software maintenance agreement with New Vision Systems Corporation.
So moved.
Hold on. Resolve that Matthew W. Copeland, town manager, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name, and on behalf of this municipality, an extension of software maintenance agreement with New Vision Systems Corporation.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Kinsler. Discussion. Councilman Arnoni?
Quick question, Matt. When the land records are available to all the other departments, that's already currently, nothing has to be scanned or added. It's just going to have that module available for the other departments to use something we already basically have between other departments.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
Councilman Crowley?
Four.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
That completes miscellaneous. Next item on the agenda is public communications. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? For the public, Mr. Moriarty, thank you for being here this evening and staying in the whole meeting. Councilman Communications.
This is a, Matt, if you could just follow up with me, could we get an understanding of how close or far we are as a municipality from accepting credit and debit cards at our point-of-sale transfer station, recreation here in town hall and so forth? Library?
Some places a lot further advanced than others.
Okay.
But yes, I can do that.
Anything else? Councilman Communications, sensing none, is there a motion to adjourn? By Councilman Stokes, seconded by Councilman Hall. All those in favor? Those opposed? We are adjourned. Have a good evening.